Schedule of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, folks, I would like to call this meeting in order and we will be starting the November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Nevada Community School District Board of Education. I'd like to welcome the new members, congratulate and thank the old members, and I'd like to call this meeting to order and seek approval of the agenda with the fore-placed hire. So we have some additions.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second to approve. The agenda is as placed before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me say aye. Opposed? We have a meeting. Public comment, did anybody get ahold of the district to speak on any matter, great or small?
No.
Again. We have one action item before us tonight. We need approval of the abstract from the county of the board of elections.
Yes. On Wednesday, November twelfth, the Story County Board of Supervisors certified the election results and the Nevada School District Director-at-Large, Tori Karcherud and Emily Shack were the ones that got the highest votes out of everyone else. So, um, as you can see, and then also our PEPAL vote came through and passed as well.
Thank you to the community on that one. Thank you for who, all the people that turned out and voted for our board. That's a nice turnout. Anybody want to contest the election? Forever hold your peace. Okay, let's make this easy. All in favor? Oh, do I have a motion to approve four point one?
I'll move to approve the abstract of votes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the abstractions for the PEPAL and the elections. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, thank you. Joe, I had it in my heart that you were going to say something on the way out the door, and there you are, just with...
Would you like to put them in front?
Are they in here?
Yeah.
We will take that.
One time for old times' sake.
We have student transportation to Grandwood. Would it cause a task? Why would that not be something, why would that make the bills?
Um, who was that to, sir?
Grandwood.
Grandwood.
I don't recall seeing that in our bills.
This was someone that Dr. Astmas had been talking to, the parents. And so we paid for transportation. I believe it was a relative that was taking the student to Grandwood, and so we reimbursed some transportation for that.
So going forward, that's something...
It's been resolved now.
Good answer. Anybody see anything they wish to ask about, comment on?
I'm just curious, the membership dues for clubs, is that per, like, student in the club, or is it like, is it like a range where it covers?
For the memberships for the different clubs that the students are involved in, that's usually, it kind of depends, like, FFA has different membership dues, like the national membership, and then sometimes there's going to be some student ones too, in there as well.
That good enough, Jayden? Well, that's how you find out, you ask questions, what I'm just saying, did that get you an answer that you understand? So we've had two weeks to look at that ballot from the AEA. Everybody open that email, go ahead and see if we wanted to sign off on that vote.
Did we ever find out that, so she's running for a district that she previously was in a different district? Do you know why, did she move?
So they did some reorganization. Let me see if I can find what...
But there's currently still a member in our district until twenty-seven.
Yeah, so they reorganized, um, let me find my email here, one sec. I believe they went from a nine to a five.
District, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, and they added four superintendents.
Yeah.
That was from the legislative session last year. Okay.
Yep, so he's, um, the gentleman that's in our district now is not going to be, obviously, yeah, so she says they're losing John as a board member.
Okay.
Because he decided not to rerun, so that's okay there. The districts were updated late this summer, they were required to reduce nine directors filled by superintendents who were voted on by their peers, they will serve at large. An election is currently underway through the School Administrators of Iowa. And then she had sent me a map, the reorganized map that I can send you guys to.
You'd sent that already, right?
Oh, have I already sent the map?
Yeah, no, it's...
Yeah, we had, I had the map.
You had that email to kind of...
Reorganization.
Okay.
Okay, that makes more sense now.
I'm just looking at the fact that, you know, we physically don't have to vote on it. Well, I mean, I just like sensitive, affirm that the board would be okay with her being our representative. That's it, because it was a topic and we...
Yeah, I mean, she put her name down on the ballot.
Yeah, she didn't share the information as far as the person, the candidate or anything, but just the bio that was on their website, yeah.
Yeah.
So are you comfortable with her as our rep?
She's, she's served her time already doing, representing another part of the district, so...
Yeah, that's kind of where I went to.
Yeah, I would be fine with it. If anyone else had any comments?
Leanne, get in.
We don't have any concerns.
Joe?
No concern.
No concerns.
Why don't we just say we're going to vote for her?
Right.
Joe, find anything you want to ask about?
Me?
Last chance.
I'm good.
Well then, how about on a hat tip out the door, let you make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the bills and its financials. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, this takes us to the melancholy part, recognition of our outgoing board members, and I wish to thank them.
Yes. As a token of our appreciation for your service to the district, I've got a couple of things here I'd like to present. I'd like to present you each with a plaque recognizing your service. And then I would like to present each of you with a lifetime athletic pass for you and one guest to any home regular season athletic contest at Nevada schools.
Cool, take me, mom. You didn't know the way to my heart.
Would like to take pictures of both the outgoing board and you. Joe, you're a fun hater.
I respectfully decline.
Joe. Accepted, regrochingly.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm carrying on.
Sorry.
Well then, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the old board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your plaque, or, or, take your scroll out. Oh, Joe?
Those guys are nice.
I'll get this one for you. Thank you all very much for welcoming me at the table.
Thank you for what you did while you were here.
Always making me feel valued and included. Always remember these times fondly.
Well, please watch us online so we know some of you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we're going to count you for watching.
Counting you as your audience.
Not yoked.
I know if we at least have one, it's you, Joe.
That's why I'm here now. I might even show up once in a while, who knows?
That's fine. Tori was known to text during meetings when things were brought up. And she did, and now that she's back, I guess we're going to have to put it on our PEPAL budget, that blue roof is going to have to be cleaned.
That's why she really...
That's why she really... Dull.
Thank you, guys, good night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, there you go, nice and warmed up.
Well, we'll turn the meeting slide around, come on over.
Do you have a preference, Tori?
No, go ahead, it's by Leanne, then I will stand up. Yes.
Welcome.
I think you're up, Pammy.
All right, so we just adjourned the retiring board, and now we're going to start the organizational meeting of the new board. And roll call, it's going to show that both the new board members and the existing returning or continuing board members are present. So we'll start with you, Tori, for a roll call.
Here.
Emily.
You said.
Yeah, sure.
Here.
Anne.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
Marty.
Here.
All right, now I'm going to give you the oath of office here.
Marty needs to be there.
What?
Let's get your helmet.
Okay, you guys want to stand up?
Yes.
Put your right hand up. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director-at-Large and the Nevada Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I will. Yes.
Welcome to the order. Welcome back.
Oh, thanks.
There you go. So now, item one point four, need to elect a president, so I will take nominations.
Would then Marty Chitty be the office president?
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Marty, yep, that goes back to you now.
We have a need for a vice president, a lot of talent at the table, so I would seek a nomination.
I nominate Tom Meyer for vice president.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve and elect Tom as our returning vice president. Tom, you want the job?
Sure, Marty, big shoes to fill.
Yours.
When you're not here.
Oh, well, you've done fine, you've done admirable. That said, can I get a vote on Tom for our vice president? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. And our operating practices after that, this is you.
I know it. Oh, operating practices?
Yes.
Element of that.
Yeah, just the housekeeping.
Yeah, authorize, we need to vote on authorizing the board president, board secretary to issue payroll checks, pay utility bills, and carry a discount, or that carry a discount if paid within a specific time period. And we do need to vote on each one of them separately.
So issuing payroll bills and all that separately?
No, I'm sorry, just...
Oh, okay.
Pay separately, yeah.
Paying separately. I would move authorization of the board president, board secretary to issue payroll checks, pay utility bills, and bills that carry a discount and paid within a specific time period.
Second.
See, I was just going to go so moved with that, I had a question.
You already had a powerless coup here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Name the official publication, name of newspaper, journal circulation, Nevada Journal.
Question this, Marty?
Why? If we were not mandated by, how much again, just so the new board members can understand, you probably know the circulation in Nevada Journal is modest at best, and that's rounding up. What do we pay them a month to publish our board minutes and legal notices in?
It could average about three, three hundred, three fifty a month, because they're publishing twice a, or, excuse me, twice a month.
So when you bump into Brett Barker asking this coming January to go down there and take that burden off of us, but in the interim, we are bound by Iowa code to approve this. So I would seek a vote on B to designate the Nevada Journal as our official publication. All in favor?
Need a motion?
Oh, yeah, I need a motion.
Motion to designate the Nevada Journal as official publication.
Supposedly seconded out.
Ringing endorsement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See the designation of our legal counsel, Allers and Cooney? Is it still Allers and Cooney?
Yep.
Okay.
I move we...
Sorry.
I move we designate Allers and Cooney as our legal counsel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to designate our president, law firm, Allers and Cooney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we have appointments for various committees here. This is a little bit of a sorting process.
Um, Joe was on Story County Conference Board, which I'll leave it to you as to whether or not you still want to have somebody attend that or not. And Misi was on the NCRC, which I believe, Emily, you're on that, right? And Joe was on the City School Committee. And you're also on CYAC, right? Okay.
I like the City School spot.
Marty?
Please?
But I'm staying on that too, right?
Marty and Leanne. And then NCRC, we've got Emily. Are you still on that, Marty?
Since two thousand nine.
So we've got two people already attending that, and then the CYAC, we've already got Emily and Marty attending that as well.
Unless somebody wants it.
Unless somebody wants it.
It's, and CYAC is a quarterly thing, it's four times a year, if somebody wants it. Cody makes it pretty involved, I mean, you can tell, it's, we do a good job, it's a good meeting, there's a lot of content, there's a lot of buy-in, he solicits people throughout the community, and they do, they're pretty receptive, and you're in that too there, Jayden.
Yep.
Yeah. It's a good committee to be on. So I would step out of the way if somebody wants it, I've been doing it for, since Nancy Port.
I think I was on it before you.
Could possibly have been.
Or on it with you.
So, you want to go back?
Sure.
And we have a new people group. Yeah, there you go.
So, you staying on that, Emily?
Sure.
Emily and Tori. And does anybody want or see a need for the Story County Conference Board?
I mean, I was listed as the alternate, but I never did anything with it, so...
I read the emails.
Yeah, I don't know what we all feel about that.
What is it?
What is the?
Leanne, you want to...
Yeah, it's the appointed individuals that oversee two different entities. One, the Story County Conference Board is the Story County Assessor's Office and budget and everything that goes with that. The City of Ames Conference Board is the City of Ames Assessor's Office and their budget. And we are members of the City of Ames Conference Board because we have property, or our school district is within the City of Ames. So I said that, yeah, I said that right, yeah.
Do you have any interest, since you're already very tuned up?
Because I work for Story County Government, I'd like to not, because I think it sometimes gets confusing for those around the table, when I'm wearing two different hats, not this table, a different table.
I did it for a year.
I've done it before, too. I just, the current leadership sometimes gets...
Well, would it be, or suggesting that it would be something we could step away from and not be missing anything for the district?
No, I think we should have representation. I mean, it's only one or two meetings a year.
I'll do it. So who's going to the Resource Center? Emily and Marty?
Yeah, I'll get these back out to you, I'll put them in board of B.
Okay. Well, there you go, new board. You have no information, two point oh. Our action agenda is brief, it's three point one, we have a fiscal year twenty-six line item budget that's been refreshed. Pammy, would you like to take us through?
Yeah. So that's a general fund line item budget that you have there. Our revenues were, are going, hopefully going to be twenty-one million, two hundred and thirty thousand. Expenditures, twenty million, nine hundred and ninety-four, for a difference of about two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Try to stay in as conservative as possible, just, basically the only thing that we changed is salaries and a few things that we knew were going to be increasing, utilities, election expenses, that kind of stuff. Everything else, for the most part, has stayed the same, and hopefully with the coming year that we can stay on track this year and everything. I do have nutrition fund and such that I have to get the board to align item budget for, and management and such as well. Dr. Astmas and I are working on coding, accurately coding the special education codes, so I am going to bring it back with updated coding. Numbers should all stay the same as far as dollars go, but the state's really wanting more precise coding as far as the teachers and associates, how much time they're spending with special education students, and if it doesn't have to be coded as special ed, they don't want us to code it. Initially, it doesn't have to, but if they're, you know, not spending most of their time with a special education student, they want us to start breaking it down a little bit more, the percentages, so Dr. Astmas is going to reach out to the teachers and have them kind of fill out some information on how much time they spend for different levels, for three different levels that we code for and such. I did notice the special ed ones were higher from last year, and that's why, because they're figuring out teacher's time for it. Yeah, yeah, teachers and associates are in there too. And just special ed costs in general have gone up a lot. So once, once him and I get that together, the coding and stuff, I'll update everything again for you guys. My only question, or I guess comment, is on page twenty-nine with the transportation. Well, among that cut, is that any concern, though, that some of the items might? There was some items in transportation and a couple other areas that were coded incorrectly last year, so they were put into a different category than they should have been. So that, that's why there was another one on here too that is the same way. We, I think it was under the co-curricular, it was getting, a teacher's salary was getting coded to some co-curricular. I was going to ask about that one, too. Yeah. It's way lower this year. Yeah. So that kind of throws things off and makes it a little harder to look at it, apples to apples like that. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Gray, it's your budget that you're presenting to us.
It looks good, it looks pretty standard.
What about plant operation and maintenance is lower than what was spent this year?
What page are you on?
Uh, two, I feel like, or sorry, fifteen. I feel like maintenance costs always go up, but... Yeah, they do, fortunately, right? Let me pull that one up here.
A big one, wasn't it, uh, let me think.
We had, we had a lot of, not plumbing, but HVAC.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was looking for.
That's a one-time expense.
Repairs last year and stuff, too, and...
And it's an old building.
So you're okay with it being budgeted lower than what we spent? I'm okay with it, I guess, just, again, hoping that we don't have all those same repairs, you know, kind of time will tell with that, but...
Yeah, and then, I mean, these are guidelines, obviously, because the line item budget's really a terrible document, and I think the important thing to keep in mind with the line item budget is you're not going to exhaust every line, right? And so, like, my supply account won't get, won't get exhausted, I don't buy many supplies, so, just as an example. Or my travel account won't get, I don't really travel much, so...
Geez, the board has, what, five, six, seven thousand dollars for line item, they don't do anything, I don't accept.
Yeah, they'll just a few odds and ends.
They're just a few odds and ends, so, that's, that's the micro, but, yeah. Because we refreshed this because we were a little bit tweaked here the first go.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so this is just, you know, taking into account now, which we learned, and giving it a little bit more accuracy than when it was first presented.
Yeah, and last year, I, when I came on last year, Brian had most of the budget done, I just glanced through a few things, you know, made a few changes there, here and there, and for the most part, I followed his format, solely trying to turn things into the way I kind of like them, love you them sometimes, but...
Yeah.
Can you tell me more about the special ed recoding? So I'm just wondering what, what that will do to the spending authority for special education, so if there's less funding coded as special ed, then that's less...
It's, it's really more of, should they be coded to level two instead of level one, you know, making sure within those three levels that they're coded accurately.
Because the coding brings more money, or requires more money?
So we, we just need to make sure that, like, our, when we get our Medicaid reimbursements, we need to make sure what we're getting reimbursed... we need to make sure what we're getting reimbursed for. So like last year, we got reimbursed for level two quite a bit of money. And then, when I went to do the billing for special ed, our expenses weren't as high as what they should have been compared to the Medicaid that we received. So I just had to do some different adjustments for the billing and such that way. So it's just a regrouping and making sure that we have everything coded correctly. And again, just making sure that we have it kind of the way the state wants us to. They're starting to...
Do the codes match? So when you say level one, two, and three, that means something in special ed? So a kid's IEP is rated one, two, and three? So that's aligned, that's direct alignment?
So those would be students waiting, right? Level one, level two, level three?
So if a pair is, you code them as a two, it's because the kid has a level two IEP?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and so what we're trying to do is, do we have a pair that's working 50% of the time with a level two, and 50% of the time with a level three? Or do they have four students they're working with throughout the day? Or just one, you know, just a one-on-one situation as well? Because that would be coded a little differently, too.
You good?
Hmm?
Okay. That is our only action agenda item for tonight. Any further questions of administration or the business office regarding anything that you see? Now would be your time.
Marty, do you need a motion?
Aye.
To approve the line item budget?
Yes. I kinda, you will, you were here, and we've had some... You remember way back when, when it was just snap, snap, snap? It hasn't been snap, snap, snap for a while, but welcome back. I would seek a motion for approval on a...
I don't know if you have another question? I don't.
No, well, that's it. I, I got run over sometimes. I've tried to walk one down the table, and it's just like, and then comes a question.
Okay.
So...
You're getting adequate weight power.
I have, I am a product of my experiences, and my experience is that sometimes you may get to the end quicker, I may get to the end quicker, but that just makes us get to the end quicker. But it's not just us.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Did you get a second on that?
I did not yet.
Oh, seconded that.
Okay.
All right. We live in better days. We have a motion and a second to approve our fiscal year '26 line item budget as presented by the business office tonight. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda personnel, did we scoop those already, or that's what you put before us tonight?
Uh, there were three resignations in the packet, and then you've got the four transportation hires before you there.
I move for the consent agenda.
Give me a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Correct, the consent agenda is approved. 5.1, board member comments. I had asked a question yesterday, so we're taking this Friday off. Will that mean that we will go to school through June 4th now, instead of June 3rd?
Yeah.
I blame Tori, she asked work.
My children are adamant to not.
Well, we won't, but...
It's very electric.
Well, as of right now, I mean, yeah, that would be the plan unless the board decides otherwise when we get to that point.
Well, we will be under...
We're trying to decide, well, how many makeup days.
Okay, well, I have an answer now, because I did not yesterday. My suspicion is we will seek administrative counsel in what we do with our late-expiring calendar.
I think we'll have to see with the snow.
With the snow weather flies, yeah.
I did notice the fourth quarter has less school days than the other three quarters. So what that means is, learning is crammed in to fewer days.
If we have quarters that don't fall quite right, I typically try to make it that way, because I know that the snow days are gonna get pulled into that quarter, so then that kinda equals it out. But, yeah, anyway.
Jayden, I had 20 snow days my senior year that I didn't have to make.
Come on. Wow.
We had like a three-week Christmas break.
Oh my.
Let's not wish for that.
Yeah, I know.
There's a lot of scooping.
Yeah.
A lot of scooping, yes.
Yeah, we only have so much in the snow budget.
Oh, there you did.
I know, I was like, he needs to...
I have a budget that shall not mention.
Just let the men's run with it, Marty. Yeah, exactly.
Leanne, usually you set this stuff out. We have a running joke that I, and it's, I didn't start it, but I always ask, where are we on our snow budget? After it snows and what we spend, because it's a declining balance. And there have been times that it's just like, well, it's not supposed to snow, and then it snows, like, well, had you not asked, we'd be fine. So that's the insight on that one. Welcome to the new. Anybody, anything you wanna say to the community as they are watching? Both of them?
Happy to meet her.
Glad to have you. Thank you for going the effort. It's, when you put yourself out before the public and solicit approval, it's a lonely place sometimes, and sometimes it's an awkward thing, and you just hope you, people see you for the sincere person that you are, and they thought so, and here you are tonight, so... Next meeting will be next month. It will be, I believe, the first of December, so...
I will be gone.
Okay.
Unless, of course, the flight gets canceled again.
I think we're supposed to be in better days now.
Till January.
Tom, you're such a pessimist.
You called me an optimist earlier, let's do it.
I realized, to balance you out.
The yang and the yang. So, we haven't heard anything from our students? Anything you would like to opine on, other than the football team, which is just, Saturday, Thursday, old alumni, just thinking you guys are just special, off-the-charts special, so that's...
We're grateful for having you stay off on Friday. I mean, we can tell just how, like, our crowd was so much bigger than Solon's, and it made a really big impact, and so, hoping that we have an even bigger crowd this Friday, and yeah, we're excited for it.
You definitely can tell the crowd difference, for sure.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, you look down from where I was sitting, and it's just like white. And I'm sitting up there, white black.
It's white again on Friday.
You didn't pick them out, Marty?
Well, it was Matthew's coaching top from last year. It's an official Nevada coach's top, but it was not the color of preference.
It was white out, wasn't it?
I know I do hear...
You have more of it than I do, so I didn't...
I know, I know, I know, I know, but I'm just glad it's there. Okay. Anything would you like to comment on, share?
Not at the moment.
How's your senior year going?
Good.
Okay.
Audition packets came out today.
It's gonna get busy pretty soon.
So I can point on my head if anybody points at me, yeah?
Way out.
It's my way out.
I'm gonna use that one.
Okay, that said...
Actually, the crowd reminded me of a question I had on Saturday night. How, explain the band situation. Why did Nevada have a band in Solon's? Just because, choice.
Because like, throughout the day, like, the first game I went to, like, one of the two-way games, both bands were there, but then...
Yeah.
The next one, there was no bands, and then we were the only bands.
It's just up to each school, to send their band or not?
I mean, that was a big advantage for us, too.
I just feel like a home team, I would say.
Absolutely, yeah. So let's hope it's, well, I guess Healan didn't have a band, did they? So they probably won't have it on this Friday either.
I doubt it.
And are we going to have our band there Friday?
Yes.
Absolutely, great.
How many buses in total are we gonna take?
That's what I was gonna say, too. Two for the band.
We can take, uh, because there's no school, we can take as many as are needed.
So what do we...
So it'll be how many people sign up for the pep bus, um, and the band, I believe, chartering again, so we won't be having those buses for the two, the buses for the team. So, just depends on how many people sign up, and you're right, we'll take them.
Is there a possibility to have more than one pep bus? Because I did notice in the email, it just said one.
With parents at work, I would think there'd be maybe somewhere.
I, I already communicated with Jason. He indicated if there's a need for more, it shouldn't be a problem. We won't turn any by your way.
Let's fill the dome.
Good question, though. The band, I noticed that, it was obvious.
I assumed it was something like that, but, yeah.
Is the final being broadcast on TV as well?
ILO public.
Yep.
Oh, good, so I can stream that.
That would be ILO public, yeah.
Okay. At work.
At work.
So a couple things I noticed, well, A, basketball started today.
And wrestling.
And wrestling. And bowling had their first win last week, which we had talked about it when I was previously on here, but having a child who is currently a bowler, like, that's exciting to see a bowling team. So, thank you to the board who brought that.
This doesn't ring.
It's good.
Doesn't interrupt anyone. Well, anybody else for the good of the order? Anything to comment on, observations, or anything? This is where you get to speak about the school. I think we've done a good job. I was very pleased to see the crowd myself. It was gratifying to see the level of competitions that we provided. And I suspect that we are likely to bring home a big trophy and have another big day. Good luck, Cubs. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.